Call over the Monday, December ninth, special meeting of the Jersey Shore School Board. Do you have a roll call, please, concerning this?
Mr. Grindberg.
Here.
Mrs. Dobler.
Here.
Mrs. Grant.
Here.
Mr. Kinley.
Here.
Mrs. Ketraski.
Here.
Mrs. Stenler.
Here.
Mrs. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Allen.
Here.
Eight members present.
Stand for the Fugitive Allegiance.
Fugitive Allegiance.
.........................................................
Okay, the public session, the Stevens meeting, will be to consider filling vacancy created in the third member of Region Three resigned at the November eleventh meeting. So, just to give you a little understanding, we will have some introductions. Then, trying to follow as closely as we can to our normal process, we'll have a motion and a second for those that get nominated to go through the interview. If you don't get a motion or a second, then you'll be eliminated at that point. For, once we, when you, normally for a motion and a second, then you have a discussion afterwards, and for purposes of tonight, the discussion will be the interview itself. We'll try to rotate through so that Mr. Becker would have the first question in the first round, and everybody else will follow through. Mrs. Beerly would have the second round, and so on and so forth, following through to the seventh question. So, any questions on how we should go on that? Any objections about how that will occur? At the end, we'll have the motion second, we'll do the interviews of the other applicants, and then at that point, we'll have a vote, as with what we announced at the last meeting. It takes five votes to actually be approved for a school board. If we have more than one applicant that has five or more votes, then we'll eliminate the other applicants, narrow it down to just those two or three, and then we'll have a third round with fewer applicants, and see whether somebody gets five votes at that point. Any objection to following that process? Okay? All right. Let's just take everybody in order. Mr. Becker is the high point on the alphabet, so I have a motion and a second to interview Mr. Becker.
We're not interviewing everybody? I guess I must have explained that.
We still have to have a motion and a second.
Don't move.
Second?
A second.
Okay. Mr. Becker, make it through to the interview process for the discussion. Mrs. Beerly is the next applicant. And, I guess a question to the solicitor. Mrs. Beerly had been nominated previously. What would be the rules of nominating her?
For her to be reconsidered, we just need a no vote from the prior meeting when she was presented to the board to pass and make the motion.
And that follows our rules?
Correct.
Oh, we're following them tonight? I'm sorry.
With a new board?
Sorry?
With a new board?
Yeah, there's new people here.
It doesn't matter. It's a continuation of that process.
It's a new process?
No, you were already presented for nomination once before, Mrs. Beerly. And if somebody wants to make the motion, who was a no vote at the last time you were presented, you can reconsider.
Well, what if you weren't here the last time? Can you still make, can you make the motion? What if that can, what kind of vote is that considered?
If you weren't present, you were, you weren't here, so you were a non-no vote. You were a no vote.
But some of the no votes aren't here, and what if one of them would nominate me again? They're not able to do that.
Anybody who was a no vote at the prior meeting can make a nomination.
But they're not all here.
Correct.
So how do they, if they want to, how do they do that, since they're not here?
They can't. One of the, one of the no members on this board would have to make that motion.
Simple.
So how does that stay up?
You were already presented once, Mrs. Beerly.
But they're not all here.
We've, we've already advised, and that's the process.
So, so no new people that are sitting on the board are allowed to make a motion?
No. A new member can make a motion, because you were, you were a non-voting member at the prior meeting.
Okay, so I can make a motion?
Correct.
To interview Mrs. Beerly?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm.
Okay. One second.
That's definitely a second.
How can, how can they make a motion if they, they were not a no vote? I thought you just said if they were not, if they were a no vote at the last meeting. Did I miss something when I was talking to Mrs. Dobler?
It was a non-vote or a no vote? So you've had a motion, and we can move forward. It's a process.
All right. Okay. Mrs. Ellison, is that the next one? Mr. or Mrs.?
Mrs.
Or presume. Okay. Anyone like to make a motion to consider Mrs. Ellison?
I will.
Second.
Next is Miss, Mrs. Manotti?
Mm-hmm. Miss.
Miss, okay.
Miss, okay.
Thank you. We have a motion for Mrs. Manotti.
Don't move.
Second. And, last but not least, Mr. Waldman. We have a motion for Mr. Waldman.
Don't move. Second, yes.
All right, just introduce the, again, introduce the process. Generally, the PSBA describes the qualifications for a school board member as follows. Under the school code, to be eligible to be elected or appointed to a school, it depends on being the school board, one must be a citizen, at least eighteen years old, of good moral character, and a resident of the school district for at least one year prior to the date of election or appointment. However, some otherwise qualified individuals may still not be eligible to run or hold office as a school director because of restrictions and other provisions of state or federal laws. So if you have an elected position, for instance, in another municipality, then you're not able to hold two positions simultaneously. For purposes of Jersey Shore School District, because we have a regional voting concept, you have to also be a resident of the region in which you're going to be represented. Information of nine elected and voted members, plus the superintendent, and that equals a team of ten. The board members develop policy and district goals. Superintendent directs operational activities and district employees within policies and approvals of the board. There, generally, there are two regular meetings per month, one scheduled meeting in July and one scheduled meeting in December. The reason we're having two this December is just because of the vacancy on the board. And then others as, as scheduled. So occasionally, we'll have meetings for various other topics that come up from time to time that are time sensitive, and you need to have an extra meeting. The school board adopts budgets, revenues derived from local, state, and federal taxes, expenses, about eighty-five percent of our, of our costs are fixed expenses, seventy percent is salaries and benefits, and then the remaining fifteen percent, and again, these are just average, rough numbers, are variable expenses that we have control over, over how that money is spent. We level local taxes, we approve contracts, we have committee assignments, we conduct student disciplinary hearings, and we participate in interviews for new employees. It's not required for us to participate, but we have a seat at the table as long as someone is available, and normally, there's one or two board members that participate. And then other unexpected activities that may occur from time to time. Again, we're going to try to rotate, and if I get things out of order, and you need to correct me, go ahead and speak up. And you'll have one minute per answer. We'll start the questioning from position one on the board up here. That would be Mrs. Thomas, all the way to the left here nears the windows, and we'll take her. Again, in order to be elected to the boards, you have to have five affirmative votes of the remaining board members, so you would have to have a five-three minimum in order to, to move on to the board. So, at that point, I'll start with Mrs. Thomas.
Okay, first question for Mr. Becker. What are your main reasons for applying for this position, and why do you want to serve in Jersey Shore School District Board of Directors?
I've been a resident of Jersey Shore since 2008 at the Piatt Township. I taught in the district for fourteen years before moving into Penn College. In my teaching role here, I started the vocational IT program basically from an empty room. I have two children that are appended. One at Saliesburg, one at the middle school, and I have a, you know, overall, this is my twentieth year teaching, and multiple degrees, and just feel like I can give back to the community and make a positive impact.
Thank you. Same question, do you want me to read your question again, or no?
Please.
You okay? Mrs. Beerly?
I too have been a resident of Jersey Shore my whole life. I was educated there, and I used to work here as an adult. As I said previously, I've been a Blue Dog for six, seven years. I was a teacher in the school district for twenty-six years. I, previous to that, was a medical technologist, so I'm familiar with two different types of employment and the challenges in both of those. I also served as an officer of the association, so I'm familiar with kinds of relationships that you need to have from the board and the association. I was also a member of the State Committee in developing Keystone Biology Exam, where I was responsible for creating and modifying questions over the course of several years. I was a club advisor, I was a club advisor, I was a class advisor. I also, for twenty-three years, I believe, every year, took students to Baltimore to expose them not only to the aquarium and the science of the aquarium, but also to a big city. Many of the kids on that trip had never been to the city before, and it was a great experience for them. I'm also feel engaged in the Jersey Shore community through my church in Piatt Township. I served on the planning commission, I was secretary of the planning commission, and I was also representative for Piatt Township through the I-99 highway planning procedure as well. I, I believe I have a lot to offer. I think I have a clear vision for the school district, and I would like to continue the work of Kelly Watson. Kelly Watson was an asset to this board. She was a very positive-thinking person. She was transparent in her dealings, she was respectful of everyone on the board, and particularly respectful of the residents of this school district. She is wisdom, and I would hope that I would be able to fill her rather large footsteps and continue that kind of representation for Region Three.
Mrs. Ellison, you need a question, Ren?
Could you repeat it, please?
What are your main reasons for applying for this position, and why do you want to serve on the Jersey Shore School District Board of Directors?
My main reason is to help the board with decisions that need to be made to be an asset, to have a positive outcome, to help each member. I've lived in Piatt Township since 2013, we moved here. I'm married, have two children in the district, and I just want to see the benefits throughout the years and help them as they grow and learn in the school district.
Okay, Ms. Manotti, you need a question, Ren?
No, thank you, Mrs. Ellison. My name is Jessie Manotti, my maiden name is Howard. My family's been there forever. Jersey Shore is so small, we're all related. Prove fact, this is my cousin. I love this town. I moved away, I've lived in a big city. My children went to a campus, not a school. I'm getting emotional, that's how much I love this town. I quit my job to get my daughter through school, that's how much education is important to me. I got so much from Jersey Shore, and I would love to be on the board and help with anything I can actually do, because this school district, if it is successful, then the children are successful, our community is successful, and our town is successful. This is such a great town, it's so beautiful. I volunteer at the library, to save the library, because I know the library is so important. Everybody thinks like, well, I can just Google it. Well, no, find it in a book, because if you Google it, it's not, it may not be the actual truth. Anyways, but my daughter had the opportunity that I had, and because I brought her, my son did really well in the big campus, my mom, my daughter didn't. When I brought her here, she adjusted. She is now going, she's working at a vet office, she starts college in the spring, and I know it's because we moved to this area, and I love it, it's important to me. My father is a supervisor at Piatt Township, so even though I moved three hours away, I never missed anything. I knew everything that was going on in town because he told me. So, I would really, if I can help, that would be my being objective, and if there's anything I could ever do, I would never hesitate, as long as it was for the right reason, and it would make it successful for our school district.
Mr. Waldman, do you need a question, Ren?
No.
Thank you.
The reason why I'm here, I, or, I'm going to be on the board, is I've worked for the school district for twenty-some years as a baseball coach, and I see the kids growing up, and I, and I'm in charge of the mill down, down where I work, where I wrote, and I've been at that position for the last three years, and I see a lot of things that go on, the kids coming out of high school that can't go to college. They come, they come into work, they're not very, they're not good workers. They're not, I think they need to be schooled more on they need, they, they need a better education on what they can do outside of going to college. Guys that come to work, you know, they're going to cell phones, there's a lot of using cell phones, things like that. They, they communicate that way. They don't really communicate like, sitting down and socializing like, like we used to do when we were kids.
Right.
You know, and I, I see a lot of that, and I don't know if it's what they're being taught, how they're being taught, it's, it's just, it, it, it's scary to see that, you know, and I think it needs to change.
Thank you, Mr. Waldman. Question two, this time we will start with Mrs. Beerly.
The current school board members represent a cross-section of life and career experiences, such as accounting, business management, entrepreneurship, education, healthcare, and others. Please tell us a little bit about yourself and your unique knowledge, skills, and/or life experiences that will benefit the school district.
My employment history is, crosses only two different careers. I was originally a medical technologist, working at the Mycraulins Hospital in the chemistry department, where I started out on second shift, I went to first shift, I also did call on third shift, I went to mandatory overtime, we worked double shifts, we worked weekends, we worked holidays. So, I've always felt that I was a voice for the students in my classroom for, for more than just what a teacher has to do, because I was familiar with what it was like to work a real job, as some people like to refer to it. But I also was an educator for twenty-six years, so I was familiar with what the challenges are in our school district, in the classroom, the changes that have taken place with new regulations at the state and federal level. I've also had the opportunity through my work with the association to become familiar with not only the high school program, but also the program K through twelve, working with teachers in other buildings and also other administrators. What I've also done, and I brought my binder here.
Mr. Beerly, hold on a minute.
Oh.
Hold on a minute.
Just, yeah.
Just finish up your thought.
I've also regularly attended board meetings for ten years. This is my binder, it begins in February of 2009, of agendas, and my personal notes that I've taken, and that I can refer to regularly from the history going back ten years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Ellison, do you need a question?
No. Thank you. I have to say, when I was a teenager, sixteen, and started working, where I went to high school, usually, you could go out during the day and work. So I started working childcare, all the way up through college, and always working, going to school, so I think the, the drive to be busy, I guess, and always striving to do my best, so working, going to college, after college, graduated and from Lock Haven, and had our first job, and it wasn't long after that that I started working again, and then we had our second job. So I've continued to work in the workforce and to be a working mom, still a working mom. So I think the demands of having to work continuously has been very adamant in my life, and I, I put my family, you know, first, their very important, education is very important to me. I love the opportunity to go to school and to go to work. I like the fact that I could make my own choices, so I was very happy going to college and working, that was my choice. Not everybody can do that or has to do that, but I was fortunate enough that, you know, working and supporting myself and raising a family now, and I feel that it is important and give me a good background.
Thank you. Mrs. Manotti?
Thank you. I'm from the Reagan years, is what I grew up in, so we were told we'd do anything, so we basically did anything. I was, my sister and I were the first girls to be on the all-boys soccer team for Jersey Shore. We did things that we were, that other schools were saying you couldn't do because you were a girl. When we were grown up, we lived on a farm, so I don't know how not to work, so we've always worked since we got up. And then, when I moved to Lancaster, I went to go to school for art. I'd already gone to Mercyhurst for governor's school for the arts, and, you know, if the state believes in you, then you can kind of believe in yourself also. So, I worked third shift so I could go home and raise my children, and while they were sleeping, I would go to work and then come home and do soccer mom and race car mom and get all the things I had to get done. And then, when I got sick, I decided to go to, back to school to become a teacher, and I worked in the largest nursing home on the East Coast, and I learned a lot about how to, to follow HIPAA law and how to actually work with a very diverse group of people. Am I out for my minute?
You're over your minute, you finished your thought, so that's good.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
But I just think that, you know, I moved out of town, and I've, I've seen different aspects, and I have the background of, I want to help people. I've always been able to help people, and if I can do it through, it has to be a great place to help.
Thank you. Mr. Waldman?
I was born and raised in the valley, I'm from the Lycestown Township. I went to Jersey Shore, graduated, went down to Duffin Steel, got a job out of high school. Started there in seventy-three, changed hands three times, or twice since then. I worked my way up through the mill, I became a scheduler in ninety-two. I was ordering materials, I was in charge of like thirty-five, forty million dollars worth of inventory a year. Went from scheduling into mill, superintendent, team leader, and I've been at that position ever since.
Thank you. Mr. Becker?
I, in high school, I, I attended a vocational program for, at the time, it's called Computer Service Technology, and since that time, I've been working in the IT field. In high school, I participated in our, in the co-op program at the Votech I attended. Upon graduation, which was kind of ironic, back in the nineties, my family had to fight for me to be able to take, go to a current technical program and take academic classes, which ultimately made that happen. After graduation, I went on for a degree in technology education, because I knew I wanted to become a teacher. Graduated in four years, also had the opportunity during that time to play college football. Immediately after graduating, I took a teaching job at Williamsport High School for three years. During that time, even through college and while teaching, I would work summers, nights, weekends, breaks for a local IT company. Accruing my hours so I could get my certification for vocational education. I came here to teach in 2003 as an IT instructor. I taught here for fourteen years in IT, continued to work summers and do some consulting work in that field. In 2017, at the end of the 2016-17 school year, I moved on and now teach IT at Penn College. So it's been a good mix of the professional field and teaching. During my time here, I taught six different dual enrollment classes. I was the co-op coordinator, the school board coordinator. There's so much more on the resume. I'll complete a second masters in IT next fall.
Thank you. Mr. Dean, he's going to try to raise his hand when you're at least getting down to over ten, fifteen seconds left.
That way you can keep track of the time.
Sometimes a minute seems like forever, and other times a minute is, it's like you can't get it all done, so.
You'll have about ten seconds left in the seeming way of it.
Okay, and this one, you mean, Mrs. Ellison?
The activities of school board members require personal time that extends well beyond just attending meetings every second and fourth Monday of the month. Do you have other commitments that might conflict with your position on this board or your ability to contribute your time and talents in the school district? or your ability to contribute your time and talents in support of school district needs?
I didn't even get to raise my hand.
This is where we get you to volunteer to do.
No, because my daughter, who's gotten through, she's established very well. I'm writing a series of children books, and I can basically make up my own schedule, and I do most of my stuff at like, like, third shift hour, so if you need me then, it would be odd, but I would be able to switch it around and work on it during the day, but for the most part, I just, I wouldn't have a problem with hours and helping volunteer, because I volunteer at enough places as it is now.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Waldman?
No.
Mr. Becker?
If you believe that your busiest guy is your most productive, I am your guy. I am involved in not only teaching full-time at the college, being on committees there, being involved in various research and different things there. I also have two children that are all in multiple sports. My son plays football, wrestles, plays baseball, and swims. My daughter swims and plays softball. We're constantly running, trying to stay on top of them and getting them to where they need to be, but before I even sent in my stuff, I made sure my wife was good with me taking a position like this, because without her help, I can't do things like this. So, she's on board, so we'll make it happen.
I'm retired and good to go.
That's what I thought.
You're more busy now, huh?
This question goes to Ms. Fanati. Describe a difficult professional challenge that you have had to face and how you successfully resolved it.
Death, and talking to the families and getting them through it. And not, like, not making them feel worse than they already do, keeping dignity and respect and letting them feel that they made the right choices. My daughter is an IEP, and I get, she looks like a typical kid, and when she acts out, then, I'm not the type of parent who, you know, makes an excuse and rushes her away. I just, you know, make her feel as normal as possible. So, you know, the other things that you face, my nephew passed away a year ago, he took his own life, and since then, we're always like a very charitable family, but ever since that has happened, I will stop for anybody and I will help anybody, because you never know the difference. That one word or that one act of kindness will do, so.
Thank you. Mr. Waldman?
1989, the plant closed, and I had four children and a new house, new car. And I went from making a very good living where my wife didn't have to work, to two jobs, three jobs, whatever I had to do, to survive. And I went back to work two months later, they opened up again. And I'd made up my mind, there wasn't many jobs, what I was doing at the plant, so I decided I was gonna get in management, one way or another. And an opening came up about three years later, and it was scheduling, and I took it, and I was on until, I had it until 2016, and from there, then they asked me if I wanted to take another position, and it was difficult, a lot of things needed change, and now we're going in the right direction, so.
Thank you. Mr. Becker?
In my transition from teaching here at Jersey Shore to the college, here at the school, I was a one-man show. I taught, I didn't have to really consult with other teachers, I didn't have to prepare students to like go into other classes other than the classes that I taught. So, I knew if I was getting a student on level two, I knew what they were because I had them on level one. I moved on to Penn College, and our IT department is the largest major on campus, and there are 11 other instructors that I have to coordinate everything with. Last year, we went over a major curriculum revision in our networking program, and you gotta get all these people in the room and hope, you know, hopefully walk away somewhat dissatisfied, quite honestly. No one gets their way in the end. It's some knockout, drag-out meetings, but like, it's, that's the professional challenge, is coming to consensus where everybody is, gets a little bit of what they want and a little bit of what they don't want, so.
Thank you. Mrs. Spierle?
When I left healthcare to become a teacher, which is, I said before, what I had always wanted to be, I went back to school, I had to do adjustment work schedule to fit my college courses in and still meet my commitments at the hospital. And then I became a substitute teacher, and I had two kids at home, and I would not know until the morning whether or not I was gonna be working in school or that I was gonna be working in the lab, and somehow we made that work for two years, but it was getting to the point where financially, being able to survive, we had a third baby, and the bills were piling up, and it was, if I don't get a job teaching full-time, I'm gonna have to go back to the lab. And that was not what I wanted to do, but it was support the family or not, if the family came first. But I was really, really lucky, because that summer, when I was gonna have to make that decision, which was to go back, Jersey Shore hired me. I was lucky, I was able to work half-time with a new baby, with all we had, I went full-time, and it was the best decision I ever made once everything fell into place, and I wasn't sure that was gonna happen.
Thank you. Mrs. Allison?
Can I repeat a question?
I certainly can. Describe a difficult professional challenge that you have had to face and how you successfully resolved it.
I was thinking back to when I would work in the daycare, I was younger, going through high school, college, and there were times that you would come across kids that their life, their home life really touched you, moved you in a way that you just wanted to cobble them up and give them hugs, take them home, give them the proper fare that they needed, and you couldn't always do that. And I think that was one of the hardest things, was seeing these kids have to go home every day and then knowing what they're gonna go home to. And I think, being in that situation, I tried to give them the best kind of life that they could have when they were there at the center. Now, I've worked at a couple of different centers, and we're gonna meet all kinds of kids, but these kids are, they are our future, and I feel like they, you have to give them the opportunity to grow, and even though they're young, because it was childcare, so you know, two, three, four, five-year-olds, I feel it's important that, you know, you start at that age to mold them and to help them to be a better person.
Thank you.
Mr. Waldman, revenues of the district are either fixed or limited by governmental agencies and regulations. Please describe how you would balance academic success of students with financial stewardship of taxpayer dollars.
Can you repeat that?
Sure. Revenues of the district are either fixed or limited by governmental agencies and regulations. Please describe how you would balance academic success of students with financial stewardship of taxpayer dollars.
I don't know what you mean. I'm sorry, I don't know. What would I do with the money that-
I think the question's round, we always have this conundrum of, you know, wanting to do whatever we can academically for the kids versus how much money can you raise or get from your revenue resources to afford to do those things that we'd like to do? So, how do you balance those two objectives?
We only get so much from the government, right? What, 78%?
No, we get it all from the government, it just depends on your part of the government, I guess.
Yeah, right.
I'll have to pass on that question, right?
Right, Mr. Becker?
You'll have to read it again.
Okay.
I look at the financial situation of our district or fiscal situation as trying to be as efficient as possible with the money that we have. So, what does that mean? Trying to, not just necessarily cutting everything, but trying to get the most out of every dollar. There's a cost of doing business, there's certainly a cost to education, but we don't wanna just blindly throw money at it either. We want to try to work as efficiently as possible to try to maximize the taxpayers and the effect of their dollars on the students.
Mrs. Spierle, revenues of the district are either fixed-
Okay, thank you. One of the things that I mentioned before is, I would hope if I was chosen that we can all work together to be a little bit more proactive than maybe we've been in the past. I think we react to funding shortages rather than proactively try to build new revenue streams, and I would like to see us, see us be able to do that going forward. I think we should solicit more input from people within the school district with that kind of experience that could help us find new ways to gain revenue. Also, work to encourage representatives at state and federal level to pursue better funding or targeted funding for various programs that we offer. I think we have a very good balance academically, with programs, support of a wide variety of students, so I would hate to see us cut any when we have done more than.
Mrs. Allison, do you need to repeat the question?
I think to try to be proactive, yes, in gaining more of the revenue. It's hard, I can, you know, so many don't wanna raise their taxes, but it is a very rural area and that we cover, and I think just to come up with ways to raise money to benefit the school in a more positive way, you know, because I don't wanna short come, I don't wanna have any, like, I don't wanna short any parts of the school, because there are a lot of really great assets that we have, a lot of the programs that are offered that students are taking benefit from, and I don't wanna see that cut.
You don't have to repeat it all, thank you. I think I've gone to enough meetings at quiet township, there's like 626 voters, and resident-wise, there, most of them are fixed income and the elderly. So, they're basically the small group where I actually live, I know their dynamics, and I know they're frugal, and I know most of them don't, like, how they live, and we don't wanna shortchange school, I think everybody agrees with that. I think education obviously is super important. When I worked for the county, I was, started off as a CNA, within six months I was short of aid. I figured out in a short amount of time how I could get government funding, make more money for my department, so I could benefit my residents. So, I think with a little time, more information with grants and funding, that would be beneficial. You just have to know what the requirements are and fill them.
I think we're back to Mr. Becker. Please describe one curricular, credit-bearing, and one extracurricular, non-credit-bearing program that represents successful programs that are offered by the district.
Well, I'm gonna say the IT-
I'm gonna guess where you're gonna go.
I'm gonna say the IT program. I have five, I have five students who went on the Internet Cisco Systems. I have multiple students all across, I think there's like eight Fortune 500 companies. Man, but it doesn't even, I could talk at length about our manufacturing program. As a co-op coordinator, I had students on co-op in the manufacturing program every year for almost a decade. One of those, one of those students was working at West Pharmaceuticals, they picked up his tab to send him to Penn College, and he had to work 25 hours a week or something, and they picked up his tuition, took him six years to graduate, but he graduated tuition-free with a bachelor's in manufacturing engineering. All of our programs have those things, and our academics are a big part of that, sending students to some really good institutions. You know, my last year here teaching, I had a young man who not only scored a perfect ACT, went to RIT, and last summer interned at Google in California. I mean, those are the academic successes. Oh, non-curricular, there's any number of different clubs. Key Club, my IT club used to, and it's still intact, used to raise funds for certification exams. You have Pep Club, getting kids involved in the community. You could talk about business with short, we short care until you're blue in the face and the good things that they've done. There's so many that I don't know how, I need more than the two minutes I took up here.
Mrs. Spierle, do you need to repeat?
I think I would be hard pressed to single out one curricular area that we show out. I think we have strengths in all areas. I was a regular classroom science teacher, so of course I'm biased towards that. So, I think what I'm gonna do is focus on the non-curricular area. Being a club advisor for quite a few years, two decades, Key Club in particular, the goal of Key Club was to build a sense of volunteerism and community service in our students, to make the environment of the high school more welcoming, because it can be intimidating for a lot of people, and not every student feels comfortable in that environment. We particularly reached out to sponsor events that would reach those kids that aren't involved in sports, that aren't in music, that aren't in drama, and one of the things that we did is we would regularly hold lock-ins, where we would open up a building from 11:00 at night until 7:00 in the morning. We'd have the pool, we'd have the gym, we'd have movies, we'd have free food, and the kids would come in and just have a fabulous time. A lot of them were at-risk kids, I would say, and it was a very, very positive experience for them.
Mrs. Allison?
I think the Bull Pups program that is offered at the school is a great asset. The high school students get to go down and learn to teach in the childcare setting, and I think that they, it's something that is very beneficial, I think, to the younger kids and to the students. I think it's an awesome program, one that I think, well, I wasn't aware of when we first moved here, otherwise I probably would've decided to put my kids in it, but I think that it's very beneficial for this area. A lot of the kids are taking advantage of it, but it teaches the high school students to connect with the younger ones. I think a lot of the programs that are offered are FBLA does really well, like Mr. Becker said, with the Wee Chalk Care, they have a relief booth event here recently.
Okay. I never knew of this program before, my daughter was eligible for an OVR program, which is free, doesn't cost the school anything. They come into school, they, Lillian meets when she's in like, study hall, and they set her up with opportunity for education, learning programs, events that they have scheduled, and they will work with, this teacher's here, so everything is scheduled. So, there's a program that costs the school district nothing. So there's a program that costs the school district nothing. I learned along with the learning support teacher because she was unaware of it. So together, we kind of learn together. There's other ones, there's other programs, there's BLAST. I mean, here are kids that are uncomfortable and don't really fit in with, you know, a mainstream kid. My kid does not fit in with a normal kid because she doesn't see exterior. So there's one. When my son was here for a short period of time, he moved back to Lancaster, missed his friends, but it was a great opportunity for him also. So the programs, I don't know if you could pick one. The CAD class is amazing, the clubs are amazing. Mr. Viral will take in any kid that has a problem or issue at home and talk to them and figure out how to direct them in the right direction. And that's just the one teacher. So that's my experience.
Could you repeat that?
Okay. Please describe one curricular child or a credit-bearing course and one extracurricular course that you feel are examples of successful programs within the school district.
The math curriculum, I would say. That is used more out in the world today than anything else that I can think of. It has dealing with, just from where I work at, reading micrometers or reading heat gauges or being able to add and subtract correctly, the simple things. And I know my grandchildren go to school. And last year, the senior football players came in in the mornings. I don't know if it's a program that they have there. Come in in the mornings and read stories to them, helped them read. You know, showed the football players some growing up. And help teach, help the kids.
Back to Mrs. Beery. Question number seven, Mr. Prunger.
Mrs. Beery, please describe one credit-bearing curriculum program that you believe represents an opportunity for improvement in the Jersey Shore School District. One credit-bearing curriculum that needs improvement.
Well, I, as I said before, in the science curriculum, I would like to see a greater linkage between science and vocational programs. I think there are physics courses and a lot of technical fields. More cross-connection between those. I mentioned before, we have a very strong anatomy and physiology program that we have tied in very well. Unfortunately, we don't have it right now, but I'd like to see us build it. A health services, curriculum, classroom, and vocational program. So that is one type of improvement.
Mrs. Allison, do you want to repeat it?
No.
I think that of all the programs offered, there is quite a, quite a bit that are beneficial for the kids. But I have to agree with Mrs. Beery in the fact that there's not a lot in that area that we have yet that maybe if we could add to it. Because we have the colleges around that are really, like Penn College, that you can do courses and count for credits. I think would be beneficial for the kids. And I think science is not our strong suit right now with that. But all the other courses are, you know, up and running, helping the kids are getting what they need. So I feel like that would be beneficial. You have a lot of jobs in that area.
Chris Manali?
In the nineteen fifty's and nineteen sixty's, my grandmother was the president of the school board. She started the VAC program. I think it's some kind of skill or some sort of direction. If it were math, if it were science being connected with healthcare, that would be brilliant because there are not enough nurses in the healthcare in this area. Suck. If they do, like when you come from, you're only as good as your facility. I think you can say the same thing about a school district. You're only as good as your school district. I left a great facility, I left a great medical facility. So when I moved here, it was hard to work in the medical field because everybody was like pages behind. And dignity and everything was not important. But I think you could look at every department and you could say, you could add bits to it. And you just have to have the teachers that are willing to go along with the same idea, the same page. And I think, like I said in the beginning, if we're successful, they're successful, the kids are successful.
Thank you. Mr. Wallman?
I believe the technical program. There's a lot of kids coming out of school that don't go to college. And they need some, they need some experience in what's out there, carpentry and welding and welding, heating, everything, you know, to get into that program and to, you know, even make a living out of it.
Thank you. Mr. Becker?
Well, believe it or not, we have all those programs up at Jersey Shore High School. We have a carpentry program, construction trades. We have a manufacturing, we have an automotive program, IT, graphic design. We used to have CAD, I think that, childcare, culinary. We have all those things. I think the thing that we're missing is connecting the kids to the programs. The guidance. Getting, and I know our pathway system that Mr. Keen started at the institute when I was on board is tremendous. It's a tremendous step. And we're supposed to be integrating that all the way down to middle school, but getting, and you know, we're not asking kids to know exactly what they want to do when they're twelve, but like start trying stuff. Maybe figure out what you don't want to do. As important as figuring out what you do want to do. So, but the other side of that is like, I, maybe it's my nature in IT. I always look at like the next software revision, how do I make stuff better? All the time, all the time. And people think that that's pessimistic, but like I could also tell you that every program in our district can also be improved. There's little things to do better. That doesn't mean that we're not doing a great job, it just means there's little things to do better. But I think connecting the kids to the programs is the, is the, where we need to improve the program.
Thank you.
Next, Brittany. Please describe one extracurricular, not credit-bearing program or activity that represents the opportunity for improvement at Jersey Shore Area School District.
So like sports-wise, you're saying? So, because you're not getting headsets for sports.
That's what I believe the question is all about.
On a P level?
It's not limited to sports, but anything that you wouldn't think of as a credit-bearing class. Would it be like they've talked about clubs before, they've talked about extracurricular activities, which could be like chorus. Although chorus is credited at the high school, but not at all the levels. Like at the elementary levels, they're not credited for those courses, anything like that.
Okay. So something to improve. Okay. I think one benefit would be, we do have a music department. I think, and I think it's great that they started at a young age, fourth grade, but they do certain things. But I think when you give the kids an opportunity to kind of reach out and learn things, like they're learning, like learning an instrument. You're teaching kids certain things that I think will stick with them. Kids start at a young age, they kind of latch on to things a little bit better. And I think something like that would kind of instill in them. Because as they get older, you know, they're in band. And I think that's a key factor for our school. Growing up, you go to football games, you get a band. I mean, that's what I think is, it makes the kids learn a lot from music.
Thank you. Jessie?
I think that, I think we have a lot of talented people that live in our area. I don't know, maybe, I, we had down Lancaster in our school district, we would have professionals that would come in and they would volunteer and they would give like hours, like almost like part-time workers. And they would teach along with students, like this is what we do at work. And they come in and they give them a hands-on learning experience. They don't get credit for it. It's after school, it's before school. They can leave school because it's like a job opportunity to see what people are doing. But again, I'll mention OVR, BLAST. I mean, here are kids that, you know, that it takes four teachers in a classroom to deal with them. Here's somebody willing to come in, sit with them, set them up for the program. Does not take away from other students, does not take away from other teachers. And it's fabulous. Another thing is the library. I think the library should be open later. It's closed before school is closed. So where are you supposed to go if you need the library? I just, you know, my, my daughter had a thing with social media because of social media bullying. So I got rid of wifi. Her anxiety went down seventy-five percent. We would go to Dunkin' Donuts to get a coffee and do homework at Dunkin' Donuts. I know she watched her, she got it done. But not every parent can do that. I made that choice, I wanted her to do good. But I think if kids go to the library, they could use the wifi. They have computers, they have multiple, like multiple things there you can actually use. But it's closed at three. It's only open twice a weekend after hours. So that's, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Wallman?
I think our band program, using the brand, like we go to, we have other teams come in here. Bands that, I mean, I think we have a lot of talent in this, in this, in this area that we could fill our band up to, I mean, you go out and you see these other, you see these other teams come in with a great band, you know, and they're not any bigger schools than we are. And that's the talent they would have for the rest of their life to go on and, you know, just even just to play on the weekends or just whenever they wanted to play a man, you know, play their instrument, you know? It's something that I think we should, I agree with the band.
Thank you. Mr. Becker?
So I think we have a lot of really great opportunities and there's always room to improve. I would suggest, yes, the band, but again, this goes back to like connecting with the students and getting them connected to the opportunities that we have for them. And then promoting them. In my new role, I have the opportunity to go to other schools and see what other schools are doing. I'm the dual enrollment liaison for our networking course. And I go to these other schools and I hear about like, you know, in wrestling at Williamsport, they have a match during the day instead of a pep rally. So all the kids go watch the match. You can do the same thing with band. You could have a winter concert. Why do we not have one or two concerts a year for a half hour to promote the band? Build those kids up. It's not that we don't have the opportunities, it's not that we're not promoting them the right way to get people excited to do them. Make it so that you can be in music and in a technical program and an athlete. You'll get more, we have the kids doing it, we have smart enough kids. And all the opportunities are there, it's just a matter of connecting them all together.
Thank you. Right, Beery?
Kind of tying along to what we had to say. One of the things that I learned as I became a teacher here, I grew up in a family of sports enthusiasts. My husband, my father participated in sports. I was in the infancy of title minds and it wasn't a lot for me at the time I was in school, but I loved sports. And I, as a teacher, I became to recognize that not everybody in the world, not every student in our high school is attracted to sports. And they recognize that we are a very pro athletic school district. And sometimes those kids that are involved in the arts kind of feel a little bit neglected. So what I would like to see is us more equal opportunity board to promote across the curriculum, that we put the same emphasis on art, music, language, anything that kids are interested in as we do our athletic programs so that we're an equal opportunity supporter of everyone.
Thank you.
That concludes the interview. Any questions? I want to thank everybody for coming in tonight and your willingness to put yourself out there to serve on the school board. Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions for us? Let's start with Mr. Becker.
None I can think of. Thank you for the consideration.
Done as well. Thanks very much.
Nobody wants to know how much it's paid?
We already know that.
The rumor was that they used to have steaks all the time. They stopped that.
You can bring that back.
I don't have any questions, but are we allowed, are you guys allowed to ask us anything that you might want to know something about us, other than the questions you asked?
Well, you had kind of an open to begin with.
Right.
To tell a little bit about yourselves.
Right, but I didn't know like if, okay, that's fine. No, I didn't know if there was like, if anybody else had any, like, day one, no.
We try to ask everybody the same questions during the same interview process.
Sorry. Thank you.
Wallman?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
While they go into voting part of it, we're not gonna make you sit up there in front of everyone. So you guys can have a seat in the audience or whatever and that way you're not sitting front and center anymore.
Thank you.
I want some time to, everybody want a little time to kind of look through your notes and...
I do. I do for them. Please.
Would you, would you ask?
If anyone wants time to come look through their notes and compare, we'll take it. We'll take them from, if Dr. Bailey comes up. Thank you.